Meaning all present, our county attorney had a personal issue couldn't attend, so we'll stand up. Glad you're leaving.
Glad you're leaving.
United States of America, and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off with, is there any additions or corrections to March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four minutes?
I saw none.
I make a motion to pass.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye carries. Also, is there any additions or corrections to the executive sessions are held March twenty-eighth on employee issue?
None on my part.
Nope. Entertain a motion to approve those.
Make a motion to approve the March date was twenty, twenty eighth executive meeting.
Second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I can start off with, I guess there's members from the school, who's all here for the school? So, I want to welcome you to the meeting, it's important to get the kids perspective, young people involved, your next generation. So, I appreciate you coming and showing effort to that. Start on with new business, request to close West Center Street, Amber?
Yes, so, we're gonna have my grandfather's celebration of life on May fourth at Berkey's shop. And it's gonna be a cruise in, cause he was so heavily involved with the anti cars. We were looking at seeing if we could get that street closed for just that block. With talking with Berkey, with people coming around that corner, we think it's best not to close it. But we were gonna ask if we could get some phones from the street department to put out, just so people kind of slow down when they come around that curb. So, we don't actually need the street closed.
We can do that.
Okay.
We did that for Jay's.
Yeah, we did it, yeah. You get what you need.
Okay, just get with Terry and no issues with that.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Anything else on that?
It'll be May fourth.
May fourth, okay. What time?
Uh, one to five.
One to five, May fourth, okay. Marshall County Solid Waste. Thank you for coming tonight.
Oh, well, thanks for allowing me to come. I have, I'm gonna come up here, cause I have a little letter to give you, but, um, I'm Mary Ann Peters. I'm with the Marshall County Solid Waste Management District. We are, and you probably know who we are, but we're, um, we're the county headquarters for residents to drop off their household hazardous waste. We also have a recycling drop off. Fun fact, on eclipse day, we had eighty people recycle before one P M. And we called it the eclipse bump, because everyone was trying to recycle before the big event happened. So, um, the reason I'm here is to talk to you a little bit about a proposed county yard waste facility. One of the calls that we get frequently at my, at my office is, hey, I have a tree I took down, I have leaves, I have brush, but I don't live in town, how do I get rid of this material? And I've been there nine years and, um, you know, the only answer I have for folks is, well, if you're outside a municipality, you are allowed to burn brush, um, you can also compost it. But other than that, there's no real solution, other than hiring a company to come and haul it away. So, this past year, with my board's approval, we had a yard waste facility study done. We were able to get a grant for it. And that gave us some more information about the possibility of setting up a county yard waste collection site, which would be for everyone in the county outside of towns, but it would also serve towns as a way, if you're collecting brush, it would be a way to not only collect it, but to process it into mulch and eventually into compost. A compost site takes a little bit more permitting than a regular, you know, mulch site. So, it's a little, it's a few years down the road. But what we would like to do is have a meeting, invite all the towns to come and sit down together and kind of explore this idea. Is this something that you're, you would be interested in, or your street departments would be interested in? What are questions you have, questions about funding, questions about equipment? We're just at the very beginning of this process, so we want to make sure that we're getting as much feedback as possible from the towns before we go ahead. And I have just a, a letter of invitation I wanted to give each of you. As well as, um, the letter includes a schematic of what we kind of envision this type of facility to look like. There's a phase one, which is just a mulching operation, and then phase two, which is actually windrow composting, which is something that they're doing in Fulton County and Port County and Porter County. I mean, it's, it's not a new process, but it, it is one that, it's a little more involved than just grinding up trees and brush. But it, what it provides is a, a soil amendment that can go into farmers' fields, it can go on landscaping, it can go into people's gardens. And it's taking material we already have here in Marshall County and turning it back into something that's usable. So, maybe people won't have to go buy bags of Cypress mulch at Lowe's every spring, which, you know, a lot of us do, because we don't really have any other way at this point. I also attached on here our annual report, it gives you some, um, just an update on our, um, our district, what we're doing and who our board members are, because they're gonna be involved in making those decisions as well. So, I'll leave these with you guys to read at your leisure.
Where does location be at? Do you have a general ideal?
Well, we have two, two sites that were identified in the feasibility study by an engineer that was, we, we contracted with G T Environmental out of, they're actually out of Ohio, but the engineer for the site, looking at the sites was from here in Indiana. One is next to the highway garage, which would, to me, would be ideal, because it's right there at the intersection of thirty and thirty-one, so it would be really convenient. And then the other one is right off seventeen north of Plymouth. If you're familiar with Hunts Auto Salvage, it's, there's county property just, I think, to the west of that. Right now, I think that what they call it is the five C pit, I don't know if that's the official term. And the last time I was there, I, um, I just drove around just to see what was there, and I startled about sixty-five vultures that were feeding on a deer carcass. It was like a horror movie. But, but, you know, that's also a possibility, and both those sites have their pros and cons, you know? I mean, it's, I think that's probably gonna be the, the most important decision, um, right at the beginning, is where we're gonna put this thing, and, and it's gonna require some public input as well. But, um, at this point, we're just ready to dialogue and start kind of exploring the idea. Do you guys have any other questions?
No, I just know that one of the issues that we've had is unattended properties like that, just people dumping stuff. And then at the cost of having to clean that up, or dispose of whatever they dumped.
What we're envisioning is actually a facility that's fenced in, staffed. Because we, you know, in the recycling business, we deal with dumping all the time. That's why we pulled all of our remote sites in Marshall County. And, you know, it, and it, what, it's frustrating, but it also shows that people have waste that they have to deal with, and sometimes they just don't have a way to deal with it. So, they, you know, find a way to deal with it. So, we're trying to avoid that kind of situation, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming over here.
Well, thank you again for letting me come and visit you and give you some information about the depot and.
Is this an R S V P thing to the meeting or?
Um, it would be great if you could, because I'll probably have snacks. I'm just saying.
Let's see, what time, six o'clock?
Six P M on, um, right, on May fifteenth. But thanks again, I really appreciate it, come and see us anytime.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay, good.
Annette.
Hi, my name is Annette Haining, and I am the Tobacco Education Coordinator for Marshall County. And I want to thank you, first off, to passing the ordinance. I love it, I think it's great, I have the signs.
Awesome.
Beautiful.
Okay, so the signs are here, and it has your logo down through here. No smoking, no vaping, cause you didn't want any marijuana, cause it's still.
Yeah, illegal.
Illegal, but here you go, there are six here, so.
And the agreement was you're supposed to dig the post holes and put them up, right?
No, 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 that was not.
You're gonna have snacks.
No, I'm not even gonna have snacks, I'm sorry, but once again, I just wanna thank you, and let's continue to be.
Yeah, thank you.
Smoke free, Kim, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Annette. Suzie Shuffler. Um, we have a contract that, uh, your, your contract expired, or is?
At the end of this month.
Ends at the end of this month. You submitted a letter to, to stay in the position you're in? Do you have anything you want to say in behalf of the people, of?
Behalf of?
Of your title, your position? I think you've done a good job.
I do too, I agree.
I, I think that, uh, I, I think you've done well, I mean, you're learning, but I think it's a good fit. I think she's built a strong, helped build a strong B Z A and planning commission, bringing it back to her, probably better than it's.
So, we need a motion?
Yep.
I make a motion that we extend the contract for Suzie.
Okay. A second. Um, do you have a date, is it December thirty first?
It's still December thirty first.
So, there's a motion on the floor, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for what you do, I know that's a lot of time and effort that you put into it, and I just wanna again say thank you.
Well, thank you for rehiring, keeping me on.
The next thing on the agenda has been a lot of controversy, talking back and forth. In one Marshall County, I think they've kind of come together and trying to reorganize the, that. I think it's important to try to at least stay involved in that, and they would like to have a representative from this council on that. So, I guess I'm gonna start with the discussion of that. With anyone?
You should do that.
Yeah, I, I'd do it, the only thing that I request out of to you, that you stay involved and maybe go to some of these meetings, cause they're usually from eight to ten in the morning, it doesn't work well with my schedule, so, with my work schedule. So, I would request that if I, if I take that position, that you guys help out and go to the meetings and help keep everybody informed.
Certainly do my best.
So, is there a motion on the floor, Terry?
I make a motion that we appoint Jonah to the position of the one Marshall County.
Since Jonah is going to be the person doing it, I'll second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, um, good luck.
Can I ask what that is?
Uh, it's kind of like a spinoff of Stellar, of all the communities have come together and trying to get money for Ready two point oh. They're putting projects together, one of the main projects that they're trying to get for Ready two point oh with housing, that the Marshall County's recognized, that housing are one of the big issues for our county and all the towns. And I think there was, don't quote me, I'm guessing, but I think there was like seventy-five million dollars?
That's a lot of money.
Lot of money that, that were entered, I, I think that's the figures I was throwing, is that right? Seventy-five million dollars that they were throwing out there for grant money. And, uh, we're in, I hate to say in competition, but basically competition for that grant money with Saint Joe County and Elkhart County, and then the projects go in and get vetted by a, a committee, and then they decide what projects, um, get some of that seventy-five million dollars. They really want, in this project of this Ready point two oh, they want to show, it's not just one organization, they want to show it's a, a unity of, of, of towns and cities and, and businesses and, uh, coming together for that, that project. So, that's the concept of it. So, um, I think that's, you know, just like any other town, we have to grow, and I think housing's one of the big things. I think that's important for Bourbon, along with the school. And so, that's a concept of it, if I'm missing anything, Jonah, you've been to the meeting?
It's a general concept, it's, it's a lot of non-for, non-for-profit organizations that come together under one board, if you will. They're, they're gonna have voting members, this board makeup, the voting members, I'm just gonna read some of this off the, off the sheet right here. Of up to twenty-three members, city and county representatives, including one from each town, Argus, Bremen, Bourbon, Culver, La Paz, and Plymouth, and a Marshall County council member, and a Marshall County commissioner of eight. So, it's a, it's a general consensus of everybody, all towns and, and committees at that level in, in Marshall County. And then they also have private sector representatives from manufacturing industries and some from non-manufacturing, to help make these up, to help bring, like, like Les said, not only housing, but, um, business to Marshall County as a whole. And the way that I understand it is, you know, the, like he said, it's not really, we're, we're, not really that we're competing, but we're, they're gonna give, state's gonna give the money to whoever's got the best plan. So, they're, they're trying to come together as a group, rather than just like Bourbon saying, oh, we need, you know, a new playground, or however you want to look at it, and there's certain criteria that everything has to be met for each, each individual towns also, so. It's like a sixty percent, correct me if I'm wrong, sixty percent, twenty percent of the investor, sixty percent of the grant, twenty percent of the investor, and twenty percent of the community, that that would be going in.
Any other questions on that, that pretty much answered your question?
Yeah, I just, you know, I didn't know what it was, and I'm sure that all these high school students have no clue what you're talking about, so.
And, and I just started learning as of December, so I'm still learning also, but. If, if you don't stay involved, I guess you're definitely gonna be to the wayside of the seventy-five million dollars. So, I guess, in, in aspect that you're involved in trying to get money for your community, or you're just setback and let the other communities keep flourishing and we don't. So, in my, my mind, you have to stay involved, to know what's going on, and maybe bring some new ideals from other communities to our community that maybe we haven't thought of. I know some of the housing ideals have been thrown around of some things that we haven't thought of or haven't done, but, um, just, it's a cooperation and bringing ideals together, so.
Okay.
Any other questions on that before we move forth? So, we'll move into the next one, is ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh four, yield stop sign. There was one that was left out. So, um, I guess, is there any discussion? There was a, one stop sign that was left, left out was East Jefferson Street, North Washington Street, southwest northeast corner. I would assume the stop signs are已经被 placed there?
No, we're waiting on this to get the stop signs.
Okay, so you haven't changed?
We haven't changed it when this gets done.
Any discussion on that before?
I make a motion to pass this.
Well, we need to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, um, make a motion to suspend.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, um, motion has been passed to suspend the rule, so, uh, is there a motion to pass ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh four for creating a new stop sign at the intersection of Jefferson Street and North Washington Street at the southwest northeast corners?
I'll make a motion to pass that.
Second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and it has passed on all three readings.
Thank you.
And this will do with all yield sites?
That way with all the yield sites.
It seemed to have been a positive decision, so.
Uh, old business, um, I guess this has been something that's been carried over, and we've had lots of discussions over. Would be the, uh, final passage tonight of ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh one nine, oh one concerning overnight parking. I think that's been.
Oh, here it is.
Sorry, wrong one. It's been read verbally, it's passed the first reading and second reading, uh, so this would be the, the third reading. So, is there any discussion, I guess, publicly? No comments, no, no discussion? So, is there a motion, I guess, on the floor for ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh one, third reading?
I make a motion to pass the ordinance. For the parking.
I second that. And so, there's been a motion on the floor, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
Now, the only question I have on this is when will this go into effect immediately?
It'll have to be public advertised.
Two weeks?
It does not have to be, because there's not a fine and, well, there is a fine, so it has to be published first. So, it probably won't go into effect until first part of May.
Okay, so are we gonna post it on our town website?
I can.
And maybe the sign also?
I can.
Should letters be sent to the residents?
I want to make sure that everybody's aware.
Do you not already send letters to people on that at one point?
No, I sent them in regards to the parking rentals.
That was, yeah, that was a two.
Kind of was the same thing, so, kinda.
No.
I can send them if you want me to.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. I, I say we post it the web, website, I say that we advertise as much we can, it's gonna be advertised in paper, so I don't know what much more we could do, I mean, it's been spoke about publicly for three months now. Plus, if we advertise on our social media and then we advertise in the paper, I think we've gone well above what we can.
Do we need to have signs posted?
Yeah, I think maybe create some signs after it's been advertised.
Yeah, I have to order the signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would say that you need one, two, three, at least four signs.
Oh, more than that.
For each section.
For both.
Yeah, both sides.
Yeah, both sides.
Oh, yeah, both sides, so, yeah.
Oh, lots more than that.
Yeah, so whatever you think is appropriate.
Well, we need to get the ordering, so we'll sit that circle out, and then we'll get signs ordered.
Okay. Anything else on the discussion for that? Oh, yeah, the next one, solar panel ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh three. I think that this has been, uh, worked on for many months. Do you want to maybe give a briefing of the kids, since you've been involved with this, Suzie?
The solar panel ordinance is, uh, solar panels are becoming more and more relevant to the way of life. Um, and so that we can keep people from, we want to keep it visually appealing. So, uh, between the plan commission and town council and our authority, we've come up with, like here in town, you can have solar panels, but they need to be flush to your roof. Um, and then there's some height, um, regulations in the two mile district, which is two miles past the municipality. And they also need to stay within, um, your setbacks of your, your parcels. So, um, there's, I mean, several other things, I think it's three, three or four pages long, but that's kind of the overall view. It's just allowing for growth with solar panels, cause there's many individuals that want solar, but being able to do that in a, you know, visually appealing, so that it's not disruptive to other people, their views and things like that, um, like the street views and stuff.
There is also a, a segment in there about if you decide to take them down, if they quit working.
If you have them decommissioned, um, there's a disposal clause in there that you have to prove that you disposed of them in a good manner, instead of just digging a hole and sticking them in there. But, um, so, we've, we've tried to cover all bases for all the people that want to have them, and then like if it's on a home and you purchased the home and don't want it, um, and that type of thing. So, we've tried to, to get every aspect of them.
Is there a discussion on the voting, um, in this over each, or suspend the rules and do it all in one?
I'd make a motion to suspend the rules and just approve it.
I second that. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. So, that being said, ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh three on the solar ordinance, uh, make a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance twenty, twenty-four dash oh three.
I second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries to pass it. Cause I think we've been working on that since December.
Yeah.
Any questions from the public on the solar work before we move on? Uh, moving on to report from department heads, Kim?
Approval of claims sixty-three twenty-one to sixty-three eighty-four, two hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
Is there a motion on the floor on approval of those claims for that amount?
I make a motion, uh, approval of the claim sixty-three twenty-one to sixty-three eighty-four.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries.
I need approval of K F eleven for Crosby construction on the water plant construction in the amount of two hundred fifty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and forty-two cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the K F eleven to Crosby construction.
I second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
At last month's meeting, we discussed the body cameras for the police department. And, um, I don't know, it was kind of like after I went home that night, I don't know, a light bulb must have come on in my head, uh, because I know Bill had reached out and said that he was gonna wait maybe until fall to, um, uh, try to get a grant to pay for those. And there is, in the end of April here, there is a reporting for the American Rescue Plan money that the town that had gotten. So, I know Jonah was not involved with this one, we originally did our, um, ordinance on how we were gonna spend our money for that. And most of that money was going for the water plant, public safety, and infrastructure, things like that. So, we have to spend the thirty-eight thousand some odd cent dollars that we have left by, by the end of the year. And, um, or we have to send it back to the federal government. So, I got talking to Bill about that, and, um, I'm just gonna ask approval to spend for nine of the body cameras, which would be five thousand seventy-six dollars. I want to, would like to have approval to spend that money out of the American Rescue Plan money.
Get them now.
And get them now. Uh, and one of the, um, officers that was in my office the other day, he had just put his on, maybe fifteen minutes or so before I was speaking with him, and the battery was already dead. So, they're not doing any justice currently of what we've got. And being that that's kind of a public safety, public servant type thing, I think that would be in lines with what we said we would spend our money with.
I make a motion to.
I do have a question before we start. We have five full-time guys, is that right, Bill?
Yes.
And how many part-time?
There's, we have about ten, but three of them.
Is nine gonna be enough with?
Five full-time, two for part-time, and two for reserves.
Okay, and, okay, so that's enough, you think, with everything? And you're geared with these cameras?
Yes.
We've had one in the, in the possession of a police officer for what, thirty days now, at least? Charging and all that's good, they hold?
Now, I'll make the motion to permit Kim and the police department to buy these nine. Now I'll make the motion to permit Kim and the police department to buy these nine, uh, video, video cameras for the body.
In that amount.
In that amount of five thousand seventy-six dollars.
Is there a second, I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Uh, Chief Martin, your activity report?
You have it?
I, I do wanna say that I like this new format, it's a little bit easier to read. So, kudos to whoever came up with it. Anything else, Chief Martin?
Um, one thing I'd like to, everybody knows Nick Spangle, Nick has taken, he's the OIC of our reserves. He's taking that over, maintaining everybody's hours and training, and.
Well, thanks, Nick.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else, do you have any, Nick?
No, not right now.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Terry, Public Works.
You have the activity reports, and everybody, you guys should add the job, part-time job description email to you, chance to look it over, is it okay?
I, I'd like to maybe talk about that, I haven't looked, looked at it, haven't had time to look at it.
Okay, that's fine, alright.
But I just, you know, just give me a, a little bit of look at it, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
How are we on our dump and fence and?
With the weather and vacation and people being sick, it's still not done.
Okay. Anything else?
There's none.
Okay. Suzie, Shuttle.
Um, last night, the plan commission committee met, um, Mr. Bontrager, John Bontrager owns, while he's in the process of purchasing. A property at four oh one South Harris Street, um, it was a public hearing, and, um, he would like to renovate this. One home into two apartments, um, to make it a duplex, but currently it is zoned as light industrial. And that you can't have a residential property on that, so he requested that it be changed to be, which is two-family, multifamily group home residential. Um, the plan commission, uh, last night did say that they approved that, so I am asking, um, if. You two gentlemen would also, um, agree with the plan committee and allow the zoning to change from light industrial to.
The, the only question I have with them changing that to a two-family group home or a group home.
Multifamily.
Yeah, so this always seems to be the issue now with parking, is they're gonna have enough parking.
He has plenty of space for parking, the property is long and, it's like, pretty long, um, we have discussed it, that the home is currently a very small home. And he has plenty of space to put, um, parking for, for parking spaces, he has been aware of that and.
And how many apartments is going?
The house will be divided in half, um, he is going to add on just a small amount, I believe, like, a foot or two, cause our. Um, ordinance says he has to have five hundred eighty-five, I think, square feet per living part, and he's short a couple feet, but he is aware of that.
Okay.
And I'm gonna also add to that, that that is the area of, that the plan commission's been focusing on of light industrial housing. Light, houses in light industrial districts, so we either need to, we need to move forward with doing something there, um, while we have the opportunity.
There are.
There's several.
Two other, there's, yeah, that area, I guess, according to Kim, used to be a foundry, was that what you told me? Um, and somehow that slipped through, and so these houses have been built on something that has been zoned like industrial, so. This property was already kind of on the plan committee's radar about getting, asking these people to change.
So it'll be changed on multifamily district?
Yes.
Yeah, multifamily property.
Yeah.
They still will have to be rea- he still is gonna be required to meet all the other guidelines of planning, so his thirty, thirty or thirty-five percent, um, coverage.
Uh, thirty for him, cause he's.
Um, will be required along with all the other ordinances and guidelines.
Is there a motion on the floor with that then?
You'll have to have a resolution, there's not any kind of resolution or ordinance wrote up for that, so. You really can't pass it until you have that replaced, so you might wanna table it until next month.
Okay.
Do you motion to table it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to table that until the following meeting.
Aye, I second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll table that then. Anything else, Suzie?
Um, there was also discussion for the rest of the hour, um, in regards to privacy fences, um, there's still the conflict of. Is there a fee, is there not a fee, do they need a permit, do they not need a permit, um, it is still a discussion, um. I'm here, I found paperwork clear back to twenty twenty-two in regards to, so it's, it's been a while.
I think maybe, um, my opinion on this is that we have a meeting with Ty. Because as I recall, when we first initiated that the county wanted to go with this, um, permit. For the county, that they were going to enforce our ordinances, and somehow it seemed to be a change, that they're imposing their. View of regulations of the county on us, and I still think that, that we need to enforce our ordinances, not the county's ordinances. And as I recall, we voted not to accept a fee or have a permit for fences, do you remember that?
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know, um.
Well, an email was given to me about twenty twenty-two, and it was from Ty, and he pretty much stated, and I can get you a copy of it. Um, that we just needed to make a choice.
I, I think we made a choice.
Didn't matter to him either way, if we didn't want to ask for, the residents to ask for a permit from them, if, you know, what it needs to be, but he just. He stated, I read it too, Jonah was present there as our liaison, that he's, he's pretty much just saying, make a choice.
Um, and my suggestion to that is we've already made a choice unless we wanna change that choice, and we're not gonna have.
Well, they'd already decided that.
I, I'm gonna say we've already made that choice, that we're not going to make people have a fence, or.
Hey, there's, there's several, there's several things that the county requires permits on that the town doesn't. And I think maybe that's the discussion that we ought to have, um, if you need me in on that discussion, let me know, with Ty. Um, because, you know, I've been involved in a lot of that, so what needs permits, what doesn't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think that there's this confusion with them, because I think we've already made that decision, haven't we, Kim?
Yes, however, like I s-
Yes, there's still people going to.
There's, they're, they go to the county directly to do their building permits, because that's how they're instructed to do that, so, and I had an issue last week. Um, where somebody was wanting to put a fence up, ours says if it's in the front, it can't be over three and a half feet. This person wanted to have a four-foot one, and so, you know, it's, if he needs something in writing that says. We're not gonna do it, or, or something, but you know, most people go directly to the county's website to do their building permits, they don't come through us. Or any of that, so that's, that's where the big controversy tends, tends to be.
And that, and that's why I think honestly, we need to sit down with Ty and, and have that discussion on what we do, what we. What's different between our town and their county ordinances, um, there's several different things that I can think of just off the top of my head that we don't require for. So, and maybe they can make lists, you know, cause I know they look at all those permits, and I don't think, I don't do their permitting, but. I wouldn't think it'd be that hard to reject somebody's payment if it had nothing to do with that, so.
They're, I mean, and this was prior to Ty taking that position, but there is a signed contract. From the town with the county that says they will enforce their ordinances over ours.
Well, maybe we need to go back and revisit that and change that ordinance for that, that contract, I mean, I'm sure there was a, um, stipulation we can. I know we can get out of that.
Oh, well, I'm sure.
So, um, maybe we need to look at that, cause I don't think it's fair that we're our own entity over here that, that have no idea of what. We deal with, for them to enforce our, our stuff, I mean, somebody in Plymouth telling us what we need to do when they don't even know what.
Exactly.
Exists over there.
And, and our planning book's changing, so we need to follow our book, so.
That's, that's just my opinion.
No, and I don't think it's right to restrict people in our town if they're wanting to better.
As long as they're not infringing on somebody.
Yep.
Correct.
And the last thing is, is what Jonah touched on was, the last, um, two-ish, two and a half years. Uh, the plan commission has been working on changing chapter three of the ordinance book, and it has been done and typed up. Um, and sent over to Alex, we're waiting for his office to put it in resolution form, as soon as I get it, I will make sure that you guys get it, so you can read it and. Cause it's, it's long, it's, I, I think it's ten or twelve pages long of all the changes that will be occurring in chapter three. And that will be all for me. Oh, wait, I changed my mind, there's, there's one more thing, um, it's been brought to my attention that property at four twelve West North Street. The greenhouse on the corner, um, has recently been purchased, the one that has the fence that goes six feet tall in the front. Um, I would like to know if the town council would let me to send them a letter informing them of our fence ordinance.
Yes.
That has the height, I know we have other issues with the fence ordinance, but the height itself, um, so that the new owners can correct that, um.
Correct or remove.
Correct or remove, so would you like for me to send a letter?
Correct.
Yes, yes, please, I, I, I think so.
Yeah.
Alright, I will.
Just a motion on the table?
Particularly since it's selling.
Just, yeah, you wanna put a motion on the table, just so it's clear in your.
I make a motion that Suzie send a letter to the residents, or what was it, four oh five?
Four twelve.
Four twelve, east north?
West.
West north, okay, well, that way then.
West north.
West north street about fence.
About the fence.
I'll second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, now I'm done.
Be sure.
I think so.
Uh, Fire Chief Chad Step?
Uh, I've had seven calls since the last meeting, um. We've been having chief meetings at the sheriff's department once a month, working on, uh, automatic mutual aid. Uh, to help ISO ratings and, and all that stuff, but county is wanting us to go with field ops. Um, that would involve getting tablets, internet pucks. And, uh, T-Mobile's donating, T-Mobile would donate the tablets to every department, how many ever you need, like, we would get two, one for each engine. Or one for the engine, one for the tanker. There's a cost to, the, the tablets are free, the field ops is a hundred and twenty a year for the, for the app. Per device, so that'd be two forty, um, I'm still gathering more information on this, I'm not really ready to submit it. It's not gonna happen for a little while, I don't think. Um, the pucks are twenty-five a month, but they, I think she said it's either monthly payment or every two years. I don't remember how, it might've been every year.
Three hundred a year.
We pay our, at least once monthly, so.
Okay, uh, cause they said if you did do the two-year, you'd have to set a reminder, because they don't send out reminders. To, hey, your two years is up.
So you would have to remember that?
Yeah.
Set it up on the.
Went back to you, yeah.
Set it up on the, the pad there.
Yes.
The reminder.
Yeah, I have that.
Um, they sent out demos, we got one in our engine right now to see how service is when we go out on calls.
Has it been useful?
Well, that's the thing, we can't get field ops on it, cause we're not paying for it.
They don't give a trial period or anything?
No. Well, at least that I know of, near ass Zach, and I don't think he ever got an answer, at least when I talked to Matt, he hadn't had an answer yet.
As, as a county, as a county is running field ops then?
Yes, and there's one fire department in this county that already has field ops, and that's Tippy Canoe. They had that when, well.
How long do you have the IPAN for a trial?
As long as we want, they didn't need to return it. Uh, field ops is nice, cause you get updated information quicker, uh, we had a call where we got dispatched to the wrong side of. Nine V, and we got there and if we would've had that, we would've known we needed to be on the other side of thirty thirty-one. Faster, but, uh, I was sold on the tablet part, because there's more things that we can install in this tablet, ERG books. Uh, there's an app called Trainat, or Train, or something like that, where any train coming through town, we would know. What and where on each car is chemicals, or, or we would know what's on there, in case there was ever a.
Could be real.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we had a few years ago.
So.
Have you, uh, spoke with the township about, see if they've participated?
I have not had a chance yet, um, I don't think it'd be an issue, but I will, I will get with him. Like I said, I, I'm not ready to submit it yet, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I will be asking that we move forward with it, when I get all the information I need.
What is the other subscription thing that we have that puts it up in the fire department?
I am responding.
So those don't link together?
No.
No. It's kinda like you guys have ops in your squad cars?
It's amazing. It's, it, it, it's like, I mean, I guess it is kinda like a, a glorified I am responding, but. If we had, if we had field ops put on everybody's cell phone, you're looking at a hundred and twenty dollars a firefighter.
So this one goes to everybody's cell phone now, the thing we have now?
The thing we have now goes to everybody's cell phones, where this would just go to.
The engine.
The tablets and the.
I saw it was a dispatch error, error, when they dispatched you to the wrong side of the road?
Yeah.
And the other way would come up like a GPS thing?
Yes, it, yeah, every time they update something in their computer, it pops up on that field ops, am I right?
Yes.
I haven't seen it a whole lot, it popped up a couple times.
Would that, if it doesn't go to everybody's cell phone, would that be a down, a draw from somebody responding in their vehicle?
No, cause, I mean. If they're responding in their vehicle, it's, it's a medical call, but. I mean, your passenger in the, in the truck's gonna see it, and you could put it out on the radio if needed, and another thing too about that is if we're going to Bremen. To say John Manfield's on fire, it's gonna have, it's gonna start listing, we're gonna know every chemical. Or, you know, what, what's going on, what's burning.
Awesome. Be positive, could be. Just keep up for us, try to get a detailed list of what the expense would be and then.
Yeah, that's why I'm waiting on T-Mobile to get back for me.
And then we'll table that and have further discussions, especially keep the township involved. And thanks for everything.
Yeah. Um, that's all I have.
Town attorney's not here, as I mentioned before, so I'll move on to, is there any patron comments or concerns?
I have one.
Sure.
Um, Jeff and I are here, along with Terry, on April twenty-seventh, the Standard and the Fuller Cup are joining together. To do what we're calling the Smash and Bash, um, we're gonna have smash burgers available out on our patio, we'll be cooking them on the grill. Um, milkshakes from the Standard, uh, what the Fuller Cup decides they're gonna do, they're gonna have their walk-up window available. Um, and what we're asking is if we can cordon off the parking spaces in front of the Standard. And the Fuller Cup for that night only, so that we don't have people parking there while we're, club tables out for people to eat.
Yeah.
And such, it would just be nice to not have cars there, plus it's a little extra padding from the road. Um, in case somebody would happen to walk off the sidewalk, and we just kind of wanted to see if that was okay, run it by you guys. Um, talk to Roger, cause he'll be the one that has to put the cones out, so that's kinda, it'd be from four to. Eight-ish that night, and it is a Saturday night.
How, how many spots, four spots?
It's gonna be four.
It's gonna be all from North Street to the fire station.
That's what I was gonna say.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Just kind of that block?
Yeah.
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 Is that gonna create an issue for you guys at all?
As long as we don't, shouldn't.
I mean, there's parking for visitors back here in this lot. Um, Terry has graciously said they can park down, of course, in his lot down at the funeral home. Um, I thought I would get with Harmony Press and see if they're not working a second shift or something, if we can offer parking. We've had way more response than we ever dreamed we'd have.
Good.
So, um, we're just trying to be ahead of things. So, but I didn't want you guys to not know that that's kind of what we were thinking.
There are several hundred people already responding.
Awesome.
Uh, we may have fed off more than we can choose.
I think I see the grill come today, don't I? Are you gonna practice this on, you know, like on us?
We could.
I'll, I'll make. So we're looking forty-eight from North Street to the fire station on, uh, east side of the way.
Twenty-seven.
Yes, the twenty-seventh.
I make a motion to allow them to block off those areas, that area.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will.
So, just, there you go.
Yeah, I'll give a call.
Well, I appreciate that. We just didn't wanna, we just think it'd be easier to have that extra padding there.
Can I ask what day that is gonna be again?
That's, uh, Saturday night, April twenty-seven. From four to eight-ish. We're gonna have music. It's gonna be fun.
Jane, do you need the alleyway blocked off too, back here?
Possibility.
Um, I don't know.
Let, let me know. We can do that too.
Yeah, I never thought about that. That wouldn't be a big deal that to keep cars from.
There are just more and more people wanting to come and kinda scary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are we supposed to do? We get a call. I mean, 'cause now our backs, our backs blocked, the front's blocked.
We won't be in front of the fire station at all.
No, yeah.
Yeah, but we're, we're responding to a call. We're, because right now.
So let, let me ask this.
Parking's already an issue since the post office went to their vans.
Yeah.
They're always there, so.
How many vehicles do you have that could respond?
Usually there's about three parked in front of a store.
It just depends on the time of day. Be it Saturday night, there's probably.
Where I'm going with this, is there any reason why we can't block these spots off for the fire department that night?
Oh.
Out here?
'Cause I mean, if there's that many people coming, that parking lot's gonna be full. This would be full out here. Which don't get me wrong, I'm glad you guys are doing this, but we gotta figure out.
These are the things we gotta figure out.
Off this section here for emergency services, like in front of the police department, that.
We should just block the street off.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. You wanna block the whole, I'm just thinking people are gonna come around the corner and go around the back to park. Is why I don't think we want to block the street off.
Well, they could. Just to the alley and to.
Okay. I mean, that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, if you wanna do this, parking spots out here, I'll let my guys know that'd be it.
Zach, you got it?
That'll work. I mean, whatever they wanna do, it's, uh.
I think we need to make sure that we're covered there.
We'll try to calm them.
Yeah. You gonna put somebody out standby with the grills?
With the grills?
I got so many burgers they're doing.
Oh, yeah, we can help if you need help.
Can we have some whiskey for Jeff? 'Cause I don't know.
Hey, you should be asking for bourbon, Jane, not whiskey. Or, well, yes, bourbon is a whiskey, isn't it?
So do we need to make, do we need to vote on that also?
Bourbon and brown sugar.
From the alley to three thirty, what is this, north?
This is Park.
Park.
East Park.
East Park. So I make a motion to block off East Park also that night with, uh, parking for emergency services only from the alleyway to three thirty-one.
I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that's cohesive with everybody. Chad, that works for you?
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Yep.
You might be able to sell hot dogs.
We, uh, I wasn't gonna bring this up till next month either, but I'm in the process of working on an open house, um, at the fire station for June eighth. When I get more details on that, I'll, I'll have it by next month.
Uh, Greg Hillgrand with Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. I just wanted a moment to speak. I've got a copy of our annual reports for you guys, uh, if you want to pass those on around. And then, uh, just give you some end of the year updates on what we did in twenty twenty-three and what we've got going this year. Uh, you'll see in there, uh, we, we did a hundred and seventy million dollars in Marshall County in cap exit, which is a investment in our county for, uh, manufacturing and industrial. Uh, that provided an additional twenty million dollars in payroll for last year in the county. Year-end, uh, Marshall County was at two point six percent unemployment. Our participation rate is at sixty-four point six percent. That's the, the rate that, uh, are eligible to work, uh, as far as their age and they are in the workforce is sixty-four point six percent. Uh, all-time high, uh, nationwide was sixty-seven percent. So, and then lows of like sixty-two. So we're, we're actually above the state average as far as the county is. Um, building permits, uh, this number, this year's a little better because, uh, I was able to get all the numbers, uh, county and, uh, Plymouth as their own. So, uh, it's two hundred and ten million dollars in, uh, building permits. Sixty million of that was for commercial, uh, construction. Uh, as you know, we, we brought back our BRNE, that's Business Retention and Expansion Interviews. We talked to industry, uh, before we would do a random sample every three years of industry. This past year, we changed that up to where we're talking to a third of our industry every year. So we're, every year, we will continue to get this information, but from different manufacturers. And, uh, all that information's, uh, confidential, but we, we can talk in generality such as, forty percent of our industry last year was, uh, maintaining, uh, what they were doing. Uh, thirty percent was, uh, growing. Uh, twenty-one percent was considered emerging and five percent was re, uh, retracting. So that's pretty small. Sixty-one percent of all our industry that we talked to is, uh, looking at, they have plans for expansion between now and the next five years. So that's promising. Of that, not workforce was our number one issue in the county. And, uh, it's a little bit different in that, uh, you remember when our participation rate was, uh, lower? They were having trouble just finding people for entry-level production jobs. They were just taking anybody to show up, you know? Uh, that's relieved itself as the unemployment rates ticked up just a little bit. But what they're, uh, really struggling with is trained employees, people that have any sort of skills involved. So one of the things we've been working with industry in the county is, uh, internships and apprenticeships, uh, getting them, uh, trained here in the county and also bringing in interns. It's a way to get, uh, young people's feet in the door in industry and, uh, show them that, uh, Northern Indiana, Bourbon, Marshall County is a wonderful place to live. So they're, they're doing more of that. Uh, we also do a, uh, survey of employees, uh, every three years. Uh, we did one in twenty seventeen. Twenty twenty, we were scheduled to do one. Wouldn't have been very effective, uh, during that year, so, uh, we, we skipped it and we did it in twenty-three. Forty-eight percent of the industry of those one hundred employers had fewer full-time employees. Thirty-eight percent had increased their employee count. Eleven percent, no change, and two percent was the first time they were surveyed. Uh, what we found is that, uh, because they were struggling, you know, getting employ, employees to come, uh, they have found ways to be more productive, uh, with, through automation, uh, just changing what they do. That was probably our biggest investment in the county is in, uh, automation. And it's not to replace workers, it's to make them more effectively, uh, more productive. You know, uh, just because workforce is such an issue, that's where we're getting a lot of, uh, investment. Uh, there was a time when I could count on, on two hands the number of robots in the county and who had them. Uh, quite frankly, I've lost count. We have so many of them in the county now. There are so many robots in the county working away. But, uh, what that brings is now you need robotic technicians. Where before you had machine operators, now you need robotic technicians, robotic programmers, things of that nature. So it's, it's a little bit better. And then, uh, the rest of it is, uh, one of the, one of the statistics that's really troubling, and I know you, you talked a little bit about One Marshall County and, and that's, uh, one of the things that, uh, well, it's not in really our mission, but it is something that affects us is housing. For instance, you know, that's not really on our mission to, but it is important to us because without the housing, the population doesn't grow and without the population, workforce suffers. Our population in Marshall County has been stagnant for a while. Back in twenty, um, or two thousand and nine, uh, population was at our peak at forty-seven thousand, uh, one hundred and twenty-six individuals. And it's just slowly, uh, ticked down from there. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, it was, uh, forty-six, three fifty-four. So we've lost people, uh, in the county. Now, we've had some housing, uh, remember in two thousand and eight, in two thousand and nine, that recession had a real correction in, in, uh, home construction. There were a lot of contractors went out of business. Uh, homes just haven't been built in the numbers that they were prior to that time. We've had a lot of homes disappear because of, uh, unsafe housing. Some flood mitigation, uh, took a chunk of them out. Some of them were, uh, uh, manufactured homes that had aged out, you know, things of that nature. And they haven't been replaced. Uh, we've lost approximately a hundred and fifty housing, uh, units in the last handful of years. So this is something that, while it's not one of our core missions, it is something that we're very interested in seeing. And I know that One Marshall County has, uh, put together or in that, in the middle of putting together a housing, uh, initiative. And we will certainly support that and be a part of it. But, uh, other than that, um, just wanted to give you a quick update on, on what we're doing and if there's anything, any questions I could answer, feel free to. All right. Well, thank you for your time then. I appreciate it.
Any other patron comments?
I have a, I have one thing. How's that last night's meeting?
Would you, uh, step forth and say your name and?
Uh, yeah, John Von Trigger, three oh six South Washington. Uh, I just, uh, asked last night about, there's an empty lot in town across the street from where we live at on the south side of town. It's been, been for sale for a while and I was just, we're kinda dreaming for a while now. I've been asking people around and people seem to think it's a good idea to, um, add like another playground for our side of town. The property's currently for sale still. And I didn't know how I should approach that or how I could bring it to you guys' attention or who we, how that works. But the address is three oh seven South Washington. It currently has a slab, probably, there used to be a, um, trailer sitting there. So it'd be a ready, maybe concrete that'd be salvageable for a basketball court and things of that nature. So I just figured I'd bring that to you guys and see how I should pursue this or.
Something we can look at, um, maybe give the chance to just drive by and look at it.
Yeah, it's, uh, I was up last night, you know, this side of town has, you know, the dog park and then the playground over here. But our side of town, it's, since I moved there a couple of years ago, it's, it's getting a lot better as far as cleaning up houses and stuff. Yeah, but we don't have the playground in our end of town, so.
Appreciate you bringing that to us and.
Thank you.
We'll take a look at it and.
John, could you sit, I don't know if you have our emails or at least Suzie's email. Can you send some more detailed information like the, probably the value or the requested value and what they're asking for, the address, like you've already given to us some, some contact information and then.
Yeah.
A- as we search into it further, at least we'll have that at that point.
Yeah, yeah, it was on tax sale like a year or so ago. It sold for like a thousand bucks. Wish you'd have knew, but, um, we just want more of that, like in, put that in the email and stuff.
All right, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other patron comments? Again, I'm gonna thank all the kids for coming, the high, young adults. I think it's important to be involved. Only way you're gonna make changes in the world is be involved. Let your voice be heard, good or bad. So I appreciate you coming. Uh, councilman with comments, Terry?
I have none.
Um, the only thing that I have that, and I, don't quote me, I've forgotten the dates, but the, um, TIF, Economic Redevelopment Commission is going to have a business appreciation luncheon sometime in May. And I think they're gonna pass out letters to the businesses, uh, over lunch and have, provide lunch to try to spark, um, conversation about how businesses think we should proceed. Any, any, um, things that they may need. And we've had this years ago, but I think it's a good thing to try to bring businesses together. Um, and they're, they're getting a letter. I think, I don't, have Rob got ahold of you on that? They'll be getting ahold of you on that. So, um, that's coming forth, um, planning. So I'm just letting you know that. So, I don't, I don't have anything else. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.